Everybody ready?
Yes, sir.
Courtney?
Oh, thank you. Yes.
Great?
Yep.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the order, excuse me, a regular meeting of the City Council of Satellite Beach, March 20th, 2019, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join me in a moment of silence and a pledge. A pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we have a few proclamations we will read and hand out. Thank you. This is an official proclamation of the City of Satellite Beach, whereas the Children's Home Society of Florida, CHS Space Coast Region, is officially launching its new Space Coast TNT Transformation Network Team on April 1st, 2019. And whereas, CHS Space Coast TNT will be charged with sparking an explosion of regional awareness supporting the understanding that is needed to keep local families safe, strong, and together. And whereas, CHS was first launched in 1902 to provide a safe, excuse me, a safe home to the growing population of abandoned and homeless children in Jacksonville, thus solving an intense societal challenge. And whereas, CHS since has built a bridge of success for more than 1 million children and families members statewide. In 2018, CHS built bridges to success for more than 60,000 people, including more than 5,000 along the Florida Space Coast. And whereas, April is National Children Abuse Prevention Month. And whereas, CHS transforms the future for local children and families, providing the right service and solution at the right time along Florida's Space Coast, currently with an emphasis on early head start, targeted case management, family and individual counseling, and Endeavor Elementary, a community partnership school which is located in the Corococo. Now there, for I, Frank Pete Catino, Mayor of the City of Satellite Beach, Bubard County, Florida, you hereby proclaim April 1st, 2019, the first day of National Children Abuse Prevention Month. So, thank you very much. Thank you for all your work. Okay. Julie, come up here for a minute. The next one is a very important one. It's Relay for Life. And Julie is probably not the hardest working people you'll ever know in this project. So I ask her, because of what she spearheaded, to please read this proclamation, and then we have a little bit we'll do after that. Thank you.
I'm getting that at Delora. Can I have that?
Yes.
Whereout the American Cancer Society Relay for Life movement was founded by Dr. Gordy Clark in Oklahoma, Washington, in 1985, and is the world's largest fundraising event to end cancer. Relay for Life is an activity that promotes cancer, whereas celebrates cancer survivors, caregivers, and remains well known for its work. Money raised from Relay for Life was part of our major event, supporting American Cancer Society and efforts to save lives from cancer by providing great information and support for people facing the disease today. The City of Satellite Beach is proud of its intent and its important endeavors to bring the community together to support all those who've been impacted by the disease. Therefore, Frank Catino, Mayor of Satellite Beach, does hereby proclaim on December 30th as Relay for Life team's time of repartee.
Thank you, Julie. A few things about Delora. Delora Middle School, National Honor Society, and they have raised over $2,300 in one of their programs. And they put up, they sell raffle tickets at Beanford Brining, and the team captains for their event are Harlan and Jeff Skinner, I don't know if they're... And both are Delora teachers, and I'd like to recognize them for their effort here tonight. Another person we want to recognize, before she came to work here, Relay for Life might have raised $2,000 a year on its best year. So far this year, they've raised over $7,000. And since Julie has taken over, they've raised over $35,000. So Julie's an early amazing lady. She has a lot of responsibilities. She does incredible stuff in this city. When you ask Julie to do something, it's always done incredibly. So Julie Ma presented this deal, and this is presented to Julie venturing grateful appreciation and recognition of your dedication and devotion to the American Cancer Society, Relay for Life. So... I know Julie Ma is incredibly proud of her. I don't know if the school won her, and you do a whole other thing, John. Yes, ma'am. Great job. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, which is citizens' comments, and I will repeat myself on this. I'll take citizens first, and then non-citizens. So if you are a citizen, not to be a citizen, of Satellite Beach, I will take you first, and then we'll go to non-citizens. So the mic is open.
I'll be first one, ma'am.
Okay, please just stick...
My name is Mary Carity. I live in, on Winchester Road. I think all of you have the email that has a picture of my house, and that your little email chain, that your little secret email chain. I stumbled onto this information last week, and I'm really disturbed about the unprofessional behavior of you guys. Somebody FOIA'd your email chain, and you were requesting your little friends to come to meetings, to disparage people who are interested in groundwater and soil contamination. And your email chain is out there on the Internet. I stumbled onto it, and I'm really disturbed. You can shake your head.
Ma'am, I don't, I don't know what you're talking about, because I've never seen an email sent.
Well, you can look it up. You know, it was FOIA'd, so you should probably, you should probably learn what your people are doing.
I have a pretty good idea.
Okay. Sending emails, trying to disparage and insult and ridicule. And then, you have a special friend who looked up information about one of the, a couple of the activists, got their addresses, and then she posted links in the email to the county website, so any little nutcase and stalker could look at that and see where those activists live, and where the activist's mother lives. That was another thing you did. You ridiculed... No, no, you don't know anything.
Ma'am, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Order, point of order. You directed it to me, not to the city manager.
Okay, well, the city manager is... The city manager is an employee that you guys chose.
We did.
And all of you should resign. You should quit, resign in shame, you should beg forgiveness of the underhanded childish tactics of trying to... If your cause was just, you know, and you didn't think there was any worry about contamination, then you shouldn't be begging people in emails to come to your meeting to shut down other people. And that's, that's the big problem. I don't come to these meetings. I don't pay attention. It's city government. It should be better than Harper Valley PTA crap. And that's what you guys are doing, and you should be ashamed of yourselves.
Good evening. I see you guys are a couple of members short. I hope everything is okay. Dan Williman, Carriage Park. I've got a few things on the list I want to address. First off, I want to speak about the nourishment material that went down on the beach. Now, I know some will say that arsenic is normal in our soil here in Florida. And while that may be true, it probably isn't normal on the beach, as evidenced by these test results here that show 4.9 and 4.4 percent, or, excuse me, milligrams per kilogram of arsenic from the Blue Goose delivery sites, and less, while still above residential exposure limits, from the other nourishment material delivery sites. I brought this up before. We've been assured that the soil is fine. It's, you know, I say soil, it's probably more soil than it is sand. It comes from a hole in the ground on the mainland somewhere. And it's not the sand that goes on the beach. It's not what belongs on the beach. So the arsenic levels would be different than what's been on the beach, being washed by the waves, we know. Should we test this? Do we have to? Does all the material coming and going on the beach have to be tested? Can we take these people's word for it? Blue Goose is the name that keeps coming up a lot. They have a lot of projects in the area. They suck, they're sucking the muck out of the O'Gally River right now, and sending it out to the landfill to dry out. So I'd like to know that, you know, they're not taking stuff like that and putting it out on our beach and calling it sand. Another topic I'd like to address is the difficulty in which I had in finding this report. It's not anywhere on the website that I could find. I spent an hour trying to hunt it down on the website. I've been through just about every page. And I was unable to, the only way I was able to find this mid-reach sampling report that I know I've seen last year was by Googling the title of the document, and Google led me to a search, a link on satellitebeach.org. So I know it's still there. It exists on the server. I just can't find it on the website. We got, we got issues with the website there, but that's, that's got to get sorted out. And now to the big topic. I'm one of the activists that had my address put out in the email chain. Our family didn't deserve that. And I have a restraining order against somebody for stalking, who's connected with this Kathy Marler person, who's just a citizen, just a concerned citizen, but who's been receiving extra special treatment from the city in the forms of documents being printed and all this stuff. You heard in the last meeting. She admitted in court, when I was getting a restraining order against her, that she is friends with Kathy Marler. Kathy Marler has a restraining order for the same behavior that Erin has a restraining order against her, for exhibiting towards me. I've been stalked. My address is now on the record. This is, this is not cool. It's unacceptable. This should not have happened. You guys have aligned yourselves with people who are stalking, harassing. Come on, guys. Thank you.
Okay, the mic's open?
Good evening. Jeff Dubinsky, Cinema Drive, resident of Satellite Beach. Just want to acknowledge, Mr. Mayor, that you did respond by email.
Thank you.
Okay. You said, "As with all citizens that come to us with an issue, we try to help and give direction," correct?
Yes, sir.
Can you suggest to me, I would still like to try to work with you.
Right.
Can you please suggest how that could happen?
Thank you. Let me respond to you. On your website or basic page, you said that you've had made an effort to contact the mayor, you guys, to speak with me. And I can assure you, you have never emailed me, or left a message on my phone or the city to want to have a meeting with me. Because the citizens who know me come here and do it. I meet with them all the time. Whether our views are different or not, I have no problem meeting with you at all. Anytime you would like, my phone is public record.
Is there a plan on the record saying, "I would like to meet with you"?
Yeah. I'll be more happy to meet with you whenever you would like.
Okay, so how would you suggest we step that up?
Call me.
Through the air call?
Or give me a call, or Julie, I'll help set it up.
Fair enough.
And I'm pretty free next week. This week, I'm pretty tied up, but preferably, what's for, 3 o'clock or after 7:00? I help coach the baseball team at Satellite, and I'm busy from 3:00 to 7:00.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So any other time, I'd be more than happy. I know we don't live very far apart, and we can meet here for lunch. It doesn't matter to me.
We'll be in touch. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. No, you're up. No, no, go, go. Citizens, she's not a citizen yet. No, please.
But I'm not going to sit down again.
Ron Jagudis, Satellite Beach. In light of the report handed in last council meeting, bringing up all kinds of issues during the part where non-citizens and citizens were able to comment, including a citizen who has received a document that is disparaging, and we all know what we're talking about. Mr. Mayor, it's been two weeks. Hopefully, you're working on something related to resolving that issue.
I responded to the gentleman who gave me that, the packet here to us. He has been responded to.
Well, so that document is public record that you responded?
I'm sure it is. I sent him an email, and all emails are public records, so you're more than welcome to check it. And I'm sure Mr. Dubinsky, who I sent it to, those guys would be more than happy to give it to you.
Why, why is it not, your response is not disseminated on the city's website, but I'll leave that alone. I want to bring something up, and I hope Mr. Councilman Brymer, rather, will respond, because he mentioned at the last meeting that during council comments, he will respond to what was stated. So I'm hoping he will respond today to that document. I still have an issue with... The issues presented in that document are quite disheartening. They are very disheartening. And to have a meeting changed in one day, and we all know that meeting, where it was changed to just city council members, and it was in-and-out traffic between council members to ensure that they were not interrupted, for whatever reason. But I find it interesting, again, I will reiterate, I feel like it's a violation of citizens here, because only one individual was selected to attend as a city person who lives in the city. I find that deplorable. And then, I did hear, when reading the document printing at City Hall, I guess I could come here to City Hall and have documents printed up, rather than going to whatever facility there is out there, such as, if I don't have a printer, I can go to Office Depot and whatnot. But I find it interesting that it's done, and then the hit pieces come out. And I don't know whether I should request to see exactly which documents were hit, printed there, that went after an individual. And I've had that done to me, not necessarily city printing, but I've had that done, and Mr. Mayor, you know that. And then, I did read where the police department went out to look at a citizen, whether they're in the city or not. I found that disturbing when we have such, we talk about resiliency, that's one factor. And then, we have Google Earth and everything else. We don't know our borders in the city, and we have to burn emissions, put a carbon footprint out there to seek out whether somebody lives in the city or not? I just got to scratch my head. And then, my next issue here is, somebody suggested in another meeting, everybody should work together here and not have this animosity. And that included lawyers. But yet, that still persists. And then, what I heard tonight is really putting out addresses? Wow. That's unbelievable. That is very sad that these childhood freshman games continue. I don't even know if they're freshman games in high school. I think they're eighth grader situations. And that is deplorable. And to wrap it up...
Sir, wrap it up, please.
Yes, I'd like to wrap it up. Well, there's actually no reason to wrap it up right now, because obviously, it's got to continue for a while, till we meet a ground of working together, and I'm going to leave that alone.
Thank you very much.
And I hope, Mr. Mayor, you come to the bottom of this and find out what is truly going on here.
I'm Lois Felder, and I'm still not a resident of Satellite Beach, but I'm closer...
You're closer?
...because the certificate of occupancy has been issued for the South Tower of Oceana, and I'm only, I don't know, six months behind before I can move in and claim residency. I was delighted at the last meeting to find out that they have figured a way to put a sidewalk from Grant to Roosevelt. Absolutely genius. Just take the right-hand turn lane, which they own, and make it a sidewalk. They don't have to deal with right-of-way issues. They don't have to worry about people who own property not wanting to sell the few feet that are necessary. So that's delightful. But I am concerned that there doesn't seem to be work on the stoplight on Roosevelt and A-1A. Now, I would like clarification, because I believe you have made Roosevelt a gorgeous street to take traffic. Now, if you've made Roosevelt a beautiful street to accommodate more cars, surely, when they get to A-1A, there should be a traffic light. Even though my concern is more for the Bod to have it on a timer for the religious aspect, so that there are no more accidents that are not the fault of the motorist who killed Dr. Epstein, because he could not see Dr. Epstein, dressed in the traditional black garb of the Bod, crossing A-1A on the 2nd of November last year. And FPNL has put bulbs in their lights. I don't know if they're LED now, but LED doesn't have bulbs. I'm learning. But I know that you have the technology, because I heard it here at one of the meetings, that you could make that stoplight Sabbath-friendly for the community that will not push a button to use a beacon or anything on the Sabbath. The act of pushing the button violates the Sabbath for them. And I know that the light can be synchronized, so that it follows the others, so you don't have rear-ending that the letter that FDOT sent, saying, "You don't need a light, and it could be more of an accident cause." It really wouldn't be. You do need that light. And I don't know how squeaky a wheel I can be, once the 54 units that are now closable, and I think, from what I gathered, within an hour after the certificate of occupancy had been issued, there were 40 telephone calls to the closing agents. So they're anxious to get in there. But once they are officially in charge of their condo association, I would like them to squeak along with me to wherever you think the squeaking for that light would do the most good. So thank you.
Thank you very much, and good luck in getting in there soon.
Can you just give her an update real quick?
Please, yes.
So they, they did the study, and they said that it didn't warrant a traffic light, but then when we asked them, you know, prior to us doing the resurfacing project with DOT, we asked for a light, and they did say it was warranted. So we asked them to relook at that, and they said they would. But you just brought up, and I, an aspect that I didn't think of, which is the new condominiums coming online. And so I'm going to bring that to them, and bring them that information, to see if that would, you know, put them over the, over the edge in getting that done. So, so they did say that they would relook at it.
That's another challenge, now, just like I am, and they weren't two years ago, and they...
And they offered to put in like a, what they call a pedestrian light, so, but the problem is, is it would basically be a, it would be flashing until a pedestrian gets there, but if you're on the Sabbath, you can't use it. So we brought that up and said it wasn't, you know, that wouldn't work for, for the situation. So, so they are trying to work with us, but, you know, they have their little, they have their rules, and, but they did say they would relook at it.
Thank you. Any further comments before I close this portion?
I just want to add, religious discrimination by not giving the Bod that light. Oh, good for you. You just don't need that. It's Satellite Beach and everything else you've got.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen Colby. I'm a 32937 Indian Harbor resident. I was just kind of wondering how we were doing since the last two weeks, if there's been any forward motion with any communications about the testing results? The PFAB that's in the school water, for example, since it's in the school water at Delora and Satellite, it must be in all of your houses. Since two of the city people's houses were tested, one I think was Kathy Marler, and one I think was Minnie. It was published somewhere, that I read it. I was wondering if the PFAB as well matched the numbers at the school, but she's not here to ask. So two weeks ago, we had a conversation where we were all disheartened about the way people acted, and ever since I spoke to you guys, I just feel really strange. One girl's not here that was here last week. Someone came by her house taking pictures of her. Stuff's going on. It's not okay. We just want transparency, and we want to be helping. Those kids wouldn't need a Relay for Life if we didn't be poisoning them in the schools with the bad water. PFAB, allegedly, is very toxic, and there's no amount that's okay. Zero is okay. Cocoa water has zero. I'm just asking for what cocoa has. We are better than cocoa. We're at least equal, okay? We pay more taxes. I want zero. Thank you.
Mic still open? There are no further. Close the citizens' portion. Well, one more. Come on. I'll reopen it.
Dale Abrams, Ocean Street. I hope you're not going to make me cry again, Mr. Mayor, like you did at a county commission meeting several years ago pertaining to the CRA.
I remember that.
Okay? Pertaining to the CRA. All right? I only have one question. Where can I find the smoke test that was done? Where is that documentation? Thank you.
Please, staff, do we have that?
Done by the county, so...
Okay. Done by the county, ma'am, so...
The county, of our county, sewer and water utility.
You had stated that you were going to give us that information.
Mic still open? There are no further comments. Close the citizens' comment portion. Courtney, on the sand on the beach, since I know we've been over that many times, Mike, at some point, can you make sure Courtney gets that information if we don't have it?
The testing information?
Yeah.
They always share that information with us.
Yeah.
But at the...
But the testing that was on the city's website was the city's testing, and we just did that because there was some concerns among our community of whether the counties was, you know, there was a conspiracy surrounding that or something. So we just did it to double test it and make sure that, you know, there's two groups testing it, and it was fine. Okay, is there anything else? Okay.
It went fine? Any other comments from council on it? Okay.
And I just wanna say that, you know, I speak with the water utility director for the City of Melbourne on a regular basis, and they're still trying to track down that, the PFOS chemical that was showing up in the water supply. They haven't been able to isolate it yet, so we don't know where it's coming from. But the water utility is managed by the City of Melbourne, so that information you can obtain directly from them, or you could ask them if that's something that you're interested in.
Thank you. Moving on to city council comments.
On Monday, I had the opportunity to help deliver meals on wheels through Aging Matters in Bravard, and that was, I, they put me with a driver that came beachside, so I got to help deliver meals on wheels to five Satellite Beach residents who get it every day, and for some of them, that's the only person they see each day. So that was a really neat eye-opening experience. And actually, one of them happened to be the grandmother of a high school friend. About halfway through the conversation, I'm like, wait a minute. So, that was great, I hope to do that again.
Great, thank you for doing it.
What I didn't get to, I'm having trouble keeping my voice here, Frank. What I didn't get to mention at the last council meeting was that I did participate in the community training with the fire department for resident safety. It was about an hour presentation that I gave with them, and that's all I had.
Great, thank you. And I attended the groundbreaking of Doubles, which, you know, is gonna be a great addition to our city, and that project is well on its way, and it's gonna be a really gorgeous project, and I think we're gonna have some, you know, it's a really nice addition to that area. Any further? Here are none. City attorneys' report?
I don't have any.
Thank you. City managers' report?
Thank you, Mayor. The Eighth Annual Hook Kids on Fishing will be Saturday, April 6th, and check-in begins at 8:30 at the Satellite Beach Library Ponds. And you can, that program begins at 9 and ends around 11:00. The event is for 6 to 16-year-olds and is sponsored by Anglers for Conservation. A parent is required to stay with the children, and adult volunteers are needed, so if there's anyone who's interested in volunteering or attending, you can go to register at the Anglers for Conservation website, or call the rec. department for more information.
Thank you.
I received an email from Martha Kirby letting us know that the Satellite Cares Program has donated approximately 200 pounds of non-perishable foodstuffs to local charities, and they've attached that. I also wanted to let you know that we are, we have a video contracting service or contract that we do our occasional videos with Doubles was one of them that we did. But we are looking at doing another one for the Satellite Cares Program and the Community Medic Program, so that we're hoping to show you in, I think, May timeframe. So I just wanna let you know that's coming out, and so we'll probably be asking you to participate in that. We wanted to thank the Bravard Business News for giving the city a free ad for Relay for Life event, and then we included that in here, so they didn't charge the city at all for that. And I received a letter from the Arby Corps of Engineers informing the city that the mid-reach project will begin dispersing sand between November 1st, 2019, to no longer than April 30th, 2020, and that's in my report as well. We are going to, well, after, at the end of my report, we're gonna show you a video for the mid-block crossings, and we pass some of these educational materials out. I wanted to let you know that the Department of Health's report on cancer incidences in our area is now being, we requested the assistance of Representative Roy in trying to gain that, get that report, because it's taken so long. And I just had a conference call with his legislative aide today, and that is expected to come out next month. And when it comes out, then they're gonna be scheduling a meeting with us to kinda go through that. So, so that's coming down the line. And so if you see Representatives Roy or his legislative aide, Angelique, let them know that we appreciate that assistance. I have been noticed that, or been notified, that I've been received a conservation award or environmental preservation award from Preserve Bravard, and that celebration will be, or award ceremony will be April 14th at Bravard Zoo. And also on April 5th is the Marine Resources Council Awards, and our mayor has been nominated for that along with Commissioner Kurt Smith and Senator Debbie Mayfield. So, if, I know some of you wanna go attend those, and just letting, you know, just last notice to let us know, and we'll get that in. Before I get to the action item, let me do the action items first, and then we'll do the video. The fire department is asking permission to apply for a $9,000 non-matching grant for technology for the state to report opiate overdoses, and that is, that information's attached in your, in my report. So we would like to get permission to go ahead and apply for that grant. It's non-matching.
Okay, great.
I'll make a motion to apply for the $9,000 non-matching grant for technology.
Thank you, I have a motion by Vice Mayor Breimer.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Zicky. At this time, since it is an action item, open up for public comment on this item. Here are none. Bring it back to council, any further council comments? Thank you. Gwen?
Councilwoman Zicky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
And Mayor Katina.
Yes. Thank you. Courtney, you have a presentation they wanna make on the-
I got two more issues, there are two more, I'm sorry, I'm adding action items.
Action items, okay.
We also have, where'd it go? We're also requesting authorization to apply for a find grant, and we didn't realize we had to get your specific vote before we sent that application in. So this would be for the ADA portion of the kayak launch at the Soto Park. The application is due on March 29th, and the city would be responsible for 50% of that cost. That cost would not exceed $20,000, which is budgeted for, I'm sorry?
Twenty-seven.
Yeah, $27,000, and that would be budgeted in 2021. So we will be able to budget that with the next budget, but we need your permission to actually apply for it. We also applied for a FERDA grant for the same thing, so we're hoping to zero the costs.
Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
A motion by Vice Mayor Breimer.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Zicky. At this time, open up for public comment on this action item. Here are none. Back to council, any further? Gwen?
Councilwoman Zicky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Katina?
Yes.
The other, last thing I wanted to get your, and this probably can be consensus, is we would like to cancel the first meeting in May, which would be May 1st. This is what we do to, so we can start preparing budget. And then also July 3rd.
So you wanna cancel the first and then-
First meeting in May.
July 3rd.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Is that a consensus, I'm wondering?
Yes. It's July 3rd before Independence Day, July 4th.
Right, yeah. And that, we usually cancel those meetings in anticipation of numerous budget meetings I have to hold with you anyway. And then, July 25th, we would like to schedule that as your budget presentation, special meeting. That's on a Thursday, so we want you to block that off. You're gonna get a budget calendar on April 3rd, but I want you to block that off now before people start vacationing and-
Okay.
Okay. All right, and that's all I got except for this video.
Is there consensus on that? Everybody fine?
Good to go.
Okay, thank you. Okay, presentation?
You may not know this, but there is a law stopping pedestrians in a crosswalk. To help keep the road safe for all of us, residential rapid flash releases are being installed at select mid-block crossings. Pedestrians touch a button to activate the signal, and a red light will flash to alert drivers that a pedestrian is crossing. Drivers and cyclists should slow down and be prepared to stop for anyone in the crosswalk. It is a violation to change lanes and pass a vehicle that has stopped for a pedestrian crossing. Pedestrians should always make sure drivers see the need first and stop before you step into the road. Pay attention, read the signs, know the rules. Safety does not happen by accident.
That was prepared by DOT, and we'll be sharing that on Facebook.
Is it gonna be on our website too? Great, okay.
On one of the, I don't know if it was an article or a post, the gentleman, and it wasn't anybody related to the city, I don't know if it was a DOT person, he kind of was, he made the comment, cars are like not required to stop. It was, it was, it was kind of confusing, the wording that he used. So I'll go back and find that, but I think that's really important that we share correct information.
Do you see, you did that? I'd be surprised if they're commenting on our Facebook pages.
I'll go back and find it. But the wording was confusing, and quite a few people were unsure what he was saying. So I'll go back and find it.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. One thing, on, this is really good, we're gonna have a city newsletter soon, should we, definitely put something in that newsletter specifically?
And we're gonna also talk about pedestrian safety at night as well, because that's a, you know, an issue that, you know, when people wear without reflective clothing or, you know, lights, we require bike lights, but we don't require people to walk around with lights, and that's, you know, we've had some complaints about some of the runners, especially at night, you know, we have a lot of running at night, people can't see them coming, stuff like that. So, we're gonna have a little article about, you know, what you can do to protect yourself when you're walking at night.
Great, thank you very much. To council, any further questions for the city manager?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda, item eight, discuss, take action on the mid-reach construction access and staging consent.
This item, please, this evening is to approve the City of Satellite Beach's consent of use agreement for the mid-reach shore protection project, beach nourishment project, and the mid-reach shore protection project's construction access and staging. And what this agreement's do is gives, becoming the ability to begin the project, have the access, and have the staging areas along the beach with the sand. Obviously, the city's continued support through the two of those consent of use agreements is necessary to begin the beach restoration project, and that's scheduled to start November 2019. If you have any questions, Mike McGarry from the Natural Resources Department is here, he's got more of the details of the actual project, but for tonight, you're just looking at the two agreements.
Thank you very much. Questions from the council?
As you know, we had a CRA meeting about this just beforehand, which Mike gave the presentation at, so I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to approve the consent of the use agreements for mid-reach shore protection project, beach nourishment, and mid-reach shore protection project, construction access and staging.
Thank you. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Breimer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Zicky. Okay, discussion on this, so these are staging areas, basically, that we're giving them. And, you know, I know we talked in that meeting, but I know one of the, you know, the different sites between Shell and Krati, my personal thing I'd like to see is be more active towards Krati, less towards Shell, because there's just so much traffic there. We just redid that beach, and there's more curbing and so forth there.
Yeah, and Mike is educated, he would be more than willing to work with our staff to be able to accommodate that.
Okay. We built a really nice thing there, and I know we've used it before, but I think it's better for-
Yeah, we kinda, we gave him the same direction, I think, like, the staff was, I think, anticipating their comments, because I know that, you know, the last project, we had some calls, so he's worked to do that.
What I'll do first, Mike, is I'll open up for public comment, and if, you know, we need your help on that, I'll call you up. At this time, open up for public comment on agenda item eight. The mic's open, sir, you need it, sorry, part of procedure, just state your name.
satellite beach. Are they just gonna be trucking the sand in again? Or are they gonna do like Cocoa Beach and then the Atlantic?
As far as I know, they were gonna truck the sand in. Mike, do you wanna answer that for us?
Yes, so the sand will be brought in by truck, and that's so that a very limited quantity of sand can be placed to minimize impact to the nearshore rock reefs, so-
Mike, you could come up here and sit next to Liz if you don't, if you don't mind.
I mean, I've been here for 18 years. They bring the trucks in, next storm, all the sand's gone. You go to Cocoa Beach, they have a real beach, you go to the Atlantic, they have a real beach, probably not the city's domain, but I'd like to know, because we don't live on the water anymore, we live in the water. It's scary. It's really scary. And I don't know who to ask.
I think this is a two-part, I'm gonna make sure I have this right. This is the dune project, and then there's the mid-reach after the fact, correct? Mike?
Well, to date, we've done slightly smaller-scale dune projects. The project that's being addressed here on these consents of use is the federal project, which will widen the beach, but only very slightly. It will not be as wide as Cocoa Beach or in the Atlantic, and that's because of the necessity to minimize environmental impacts to the nearshore rock reef. So it will be, it will be very slightly larger than projects you've seen to date, but it won't be like Cocoa Beach, and that's just, it's due to the environmental constraints.
Because of the worms?
Because of the hard bottom habitat. With or without the worms, the rock habitat is protected by federal and state law. So, we balance the project to maintain the beach. Our goal is largely to maintain the beach sort of as it is now. Don't let it continue the old landwork, but it won't be advanced significantly seaward, and that's just because that habitat must be protected.
Because at one point, I thought I read in Florida today that we're gonna find a dredge in the mid-reach.
Uh, that's, that's-
A year ago.
They may have said to construct the mid-reach, but they wouldn't have said to build it with a dredge, or if they did, it may have been mistaken, but I-
So aren't you guys concerned about our beach that we're not protected?
We're trying to protect it with the best possible science we have now, and try to get a balance between not ruining the reef and protecting the homeowners' properties that are there. Our problem, whether we believe that this is good for the long run, is our hands are tied. We either do this, or you're allowed to armor your property, and if you armor the property, the beach will go away, and everybody on either side would make it worse, then it would be, hopefully, the impact on the reefs are minimal by doing this. I can tell you this, I've lived here for 60 years. The beach was wider. The land on Krati Park, eastward of Krati Park, there was an access for a road there, and there was another set of lots, 125 feet to the east of that, go on the plot by O'Gally by the Sea. Mother Nature's taken it away. So, our best ability right now, for what we know today, knowledge-wise, that this what put in the sand there, to me, is almost a compromise, or, you know, we've asked, if we're honest, about how we are gonna retreat. We did a resolution a few months back that, you know, maybe this isn't the right place to build more on and so forth, for this coastal conservation lines and so forth. Because it was wider. I mean, I can show you pictures, when I was a kid, there was cars on the beach.
Well, it was wider when I moved here in 2001.
But it's going away, we have a reef system that we have to protect, and, you know-
And they're putting in artificial reefs, did I read that?
That was done for the, to mitigate the impacts with this project. So there'll be, what, a 10%?
Yeah, the coming beach project may impact up to 10% of the nearshore natural rock reef. So to mitigate that impact, artificial reefs have been built offshore.
That's not, that's not storm protection.
No, it's not. It's mitigation to replace any impact to the natural, to the natural-
So satellite, we nearly get what Cocoa Beach got, in terms of the beach.
It doesn't look like it. Because of the laws that we have to comply with.
I mean, that's secondary to the safety, but property values are obviously a concern as well. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I work with Bravard County, and we can, we're happy to talk to you about-
Okay, citizens' comment, for citizens? Excuse me?
Hello, thank you.
Hello, thank you, Dean Granholm, Satellite Beach. About the artificial coquina placements, those have been placed across through Satellite Beach, because I read an article that the worm has, and the fish have attracted to the artificial coquina reefs all the way from Sebastian up to Indian Harbor, and that it's been very successful, the fish are thriving, and yet, in Indian Harbor, that's, it's an article I just read last night, and, and I know the, the state senate has just approved the seven point one million dollar mid-reef project for Satellite Beach in the committee. So, why not extend the artificial reef where fish are successful, the worms are successful, which is the environmental issue, so that we can extend our beach line?
There, there are constraints, the, the artificial mitigation reef has been permitted and designed years ago in balance with the design of the beach project, and it is not acceptable to the environmental agencies, state or federal, to bury all the rock and try to, try to mitigate it with all artificial reef. We had to, we had to balance with those agencies, and so that, you know, that it was a long negotiation with state and federal agencies to come up with the, with the current plan, which has, has been in place for a number of years now.
So, when, when the mayor discussed when you used to drive on the beach, or they used to drive on the beach, and you remember structures even further out, were the rock reefs buried at that time?
They may have been, but the regulatory agencies don't care if it's exposed, if it's, if it's habitat now, you must protect the habitat. It's like, if a wetland sprung up and it wasn't a wetland a thousand years ago, doesn't matter, if it's a wetland today, you have to protect it today.
That's very true.
We've, I mean, that's, that's the way the rules work.
And, and the, the location of the reefs are not indicative of whether it's going to be widened in that location, so, there are some, some impacts, you know, that, that were further on in Indian Harbor and so on, but it just happened to be that's where they put the, they felt that was the best location for the mitigation reef, but it really didn't have anything to do with, like municipal boundaries or anything like that, it wasn't.
But Indian Harbor got the dredging and sanding, but Indian Atlantic and Satellite Beach did not?
No.
No. No, we all, we all received dune re-nourishment, none of it was dredged, it was all trucked in.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, yes.
The mic's still open?
Dale Abrams, Ocean Street, I have a question for Mike. I'm hoping and praying that this is going to be a quiet hurricane season. If for some reason it is not, could the allocation of the sand change? Will you adjust it if we have a change in what it looks like now?
The way the project is designed is to set an eastern maximum limit of where we will construct the beach, the maximum seaward we'll ever build the beach. So, if a storm takes away more dune, we'll put more sand in the dune, and we'll build the beach to the exact, we're fixing the eastern limit of the beach and saying, this is how we're going to main the beach, maintain the beach from here forward. So, if a big hurricane eats the dune, we will increase the amount of sand the project needs, but it will not push the project further seaward, it will just replace more of the bulk loss from the dune.
Kind of like what you did for, I believe for Irma, was it Irma or Matthew? Matthew?
Probably, both, in combination, we, in those projects, we made an effort to replace the volume of, the volume loss to the storm as best we could quantify.
Well, for those of you who know or don't know, I live directly on the ocean, and I don't know if you've been out there in the last couple of days?
I have not in the past couple of days.
Well, we've had some interesting weather going on, I can't, I don't know whether it's northeast or whatever, whatever it is, and some very high seas, and we now have this ledge, as of this morning, I was out there looking at it, and it has to do with our seas have been, I don't know, anywhere from five to seven, and we do have a full moon coming, so, I don't know, there, there, you know, there's going to be some issues out there now, which is a given. I mean, I, I deal with this, I've been doing this for twenty-one years, so, but the question is, if we do have any event during hurricane season, then, you know, I'm relieved that you're going to do what needs to be done, and I, I've been through enough re-nourishment programs to know that you always do the right thing, okay?
Thank you.
Roger Goodis, Satellite Beach. Of course, maybe not everyone knows, but I do live in the same property that Dale Abrams does, and thank you, Mr. McGary, for what you're doing. The projects have gotten better, and I know you're trying to get better sand all the time, and there is a balance. Unfortunately, I won't agree with, with the fact that when the mayor talks about the sand being washed away, and this is how the system works, and it's not the mayor's situation, actually, it's, it's how the things are done in government, but I'm going to let that one go, because I know everyone's trying to take an effort to ensure that things are done the right way. My question is, though, that we must also understand, as Dale says, today's a ledge, but it shifts around, and the sand shifts every which way, and it ebbs and flows sometimes. And something I would like to suggest going forward to help minimize costs is, maybe, and that's been discussed in the past, is that some form of, as it ebbs and tides, sometimes there needs to be a effort made not to, to bring it back towards the dunes, so that it does, does not go into the sea. So, that's just a, a suggestion of grading it at certain times to push it back, and that's probably going to involve a huge environmental study and all those good things, but that's something to think about over the future, and I know this is a fifty-year project that's going on, and that's a good thing, because we all should remember that when the port was dug, there's a lot of history here, and I'm not going to belabor the point, there's a lot of history here that's not understood about when the port was dug, and how the sand could not shift back and forth, and we can get in all kinds of environmental issues, but that's not the real purpose right now. The purpose of this meeting, at, at this point, is to have the access points for the delivery of sand. I agree that since where it was delivered last, it was built up, and I agree that it should be done in another area and build that up. And one thing I will say, maybe the city needs to examine to ensure, and this should be built into future budgets to contribute, and I'm finishing up, is to ensure that any outfalls, outfalls that in the past were things where stormwater was going out into the ocean, maybe there needs to be a study to make sure that there are no cavities remaining out there of these outfalls that undermine the beach. They probably collapsed now by now, but I still...
So, I have to say, your time's up on the mic, the buzzer went off.
I, I said I was going to wrap it up.
You are, thank you, please do so.
And I'm saying that maybe the collapsed areas may have some issues, that there, there's cavities in there that need to be addressed for the outfall lines, and that's something that should be looked at in all stormwater projects to preserve the beach, and to ensure that there's no stormwater going out.
Your time's up, thank you, please remove yourself.
You know, Mr. Mayor, let's be nice, let's be nice.
Please, you had your time, I have, it's time, the buzzer went off, I gave you extra time to wrap up.
You know, Mr. Mayor...
So, please take a seat, thank you.
Really?
Yes, sir, thank you very much. The mic's still open? Here and no further?
My name's Matt Fleming, I live at seventeen seventy-seven A1A Satellite Beach. I am the organizer of Save the Mid-Reach, which has been the ongoing effort to mitigate the damage that is being done to our beach and our community by these projects. And I want to address a couple of things. First of all, Ms. Rosicky, I imagine you feel like standing, you're standing in front of a, a house fire without a hose, because you're brand new to all this, so when people talk about the council, it's important to remember that she is new to this ship and, and has, has not taken part in a lot of the stuff we keep hearing. With respect to Ms. Barker's claim that there is some sort of conspiracy about county testing, the testing was good, the testing was good, the testing was good, and then Blue Goose was removed from the project last year, because in fact, the material was bad. We've heard claims that this hasn't affected turtle nesting, that has been proven false. We are talking about spending millions and millions and millions and millions endlessly of tax dollars to save a handful of buildings, when it would be much cheaper to simply buy the buildings. Reports that there are fish populations on this reef are not scientific, they are anecdotal, I'm familiar with them, and the profile design is flawed. Obviously, there's been that many problems so far, the, the way the profile is designed does not take into account the way the sand moves correctly. There is something called S. Beach formulations that old engineering did not use, they came up with their own formula, and that's how the beach profile was built, which is the shape of, the future shape of the beach. With respect to the truck haul, Mr. McGary, is that coming from inland, or is that going to be from shoal material?
The current plan is, is to use a, potentially a combination of both. There's consideration when a dredge is available in constructing another federal shore protection project in Brevard, that excess sand may be stockpiled with a dredge on that beach, a remote location from the mid-reach, to not place sand with a dredge near the rock habitat. So, there may be dredged sand from canaveral shoals used and relocated by truck to the mid-reach, or it may come from upland sand mines, depending on availability of, and quantity of dredge material. So, over the course of the project, it will likely be both sources.
And if I could run long, is that possible? I just have one or two more questions.
You haven't gone off yet, so I'm going to be fair to everyone, so please...
And then I have a very short finishing plea to make for the city. How many cubic yards are we using in, this time?
The current plan is, is on the order of two hundred and twenty-five thousand cubic yards.
And that's down from six hundred thousand cubic yards, which is the initial beach profile, correct?
The initial design was in a worst-case eroded beach profile, so the amount of sand we placed by dune project has been, in effect, removed from the next placement, so that the sand doesn't advance too far seaward and, and impact...
Well, you would say that it, honestly, in the last year and a half, there has been a significant reduction to the amount of sand planned on being used on the beach?
Because of the new project they already did.
Yeah, because of the sand we have...
So, it went from like four hundred thousand, somewhere between four hundred thousand and six hundred thousand out of two hundred thousand.
Well, I, as I told you a couple of years ago, it was not at that time going to be six hundred thousand either, it has...
That was what I read in the paper.
The six hundred thousand was in the most severely eroded post-hurricane state circa two thousand five, but maintenance, maintenance activity since then has reduced the need, the volume need.
How much was used last year? Forty thousand?
No, significantly more than that, but I don't have the number in my head, probably on the order of a hundred and seventy thousand, but that, I, I honestly don't have a good hard number in my head.
That was, that was in the paper, I have a copy of that. So, so it's pretty fair to say that there's been a real struggle with getting honest information about this project, and that has been ongoing. My recommendation tonight is to say no to approving construction access, the beach doesn't need it right now, it will save lots of money, and it can be revisited later. That's, that's my advice, protect the reef, say no to this, you have an opportunity tonight to stop this from happening. Thank you.
Hi, I have a question for you, if I can get you...
Please direct it to here.
Hi, I have a question about the dirt. When the dirt comes down, and it comes down towards the rock, how does it get back up? Or does it just sit on the rock, and you dump more up here, just slide down? I'm confused, because I thought we were re-nourishing the dunes, and if it slides down, can you tell me if it's covering the, the worms in the rocks? Because I know they have green things growing on them, they have to have sunlight?
In the wintertime, when there are rougher seas, specifically short wavelength wind-driven waves, the beach erodes, and the sand moves down onto the area of the reef. In the summer, when there's long period swells, those swells transport sand differently, and in the summer, it brings the sand back up to the high beach. So, that's a natural, the natural behavior of a beach, and the place sand will behave the same way.
So, I'm a native, and I was remembering, I don't know, twenty, fifteen years ago, we had to step and jump down like a six-foot cliff to get onto the sand. You came down the beach, then there was a short walk, maybe about four feet, and then a six-foot drop down, and then you had beach level. I'm just confused, I was like, how much sand we're going to dump? I guess that's my conclusion, is, I mean, how much can you, infinite, infinity going on, like for the next a thousand years, keep dumping sand up there, and it's just going to all wash down, right? Isn't that the path with the moon and the flow of the current continually wash it out? Maybe bring some back, but it will never hit the dune again, will it? Not unless we have a tsunami?
No, that's not correct. It, it moves to the upper beach, and the wind drives it back to the dune. So, a normal, there are periods when the beach naturally recovers, including the dune, which grows, and during storm events, that sand moves into the nearshore system, but it, it does move back and forth naturally.
I'll be watching it, thank you.
And there is, there is natural recovery.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comment? This time, I'll close public comment on agenda item eight, bring it back to council. Any further, council?
No.
Go ahead.
Councilwoman Rosicky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
And Mayor Katina?
Yes, motion passes. Mike, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item nine, discuss take action on exhibit A to the Florida Department of Transportation Traffic Signal Maintenance.
Mayor, this, the city has an agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation related to the maintenance of traffic signals, and located on state roads within the city, and seven of these intersections are covered under this agreement. The agenda item in nineteen twenty included an amount of twenty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-one, and this year, I'm sorry, which is a slight increase over eighteen nineteen of six hundred and two dollars. So, we're asking for your authorization to allow me to sign the FDOT Transportation Traffic Signal Maintenance and Compensation Agreement Exhibit A for eighteen nineteen and nineteen twenty.
Thank you. Motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to sign the, the Florida DOT agreement.
Second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Rosicky. According to this is the agreement we basically do every couple of years or every year.
Yeah, and they just give us an estimate, and, and that, that goes to the county, we, we contracted the county to do that.
Okay, thank you. At this time, open up for agenda item nine for public comment. Here and none, back to council, any further, council? Here and none, go ahead.
Councilwoman Rosicky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Katina?
Yes. Moving on to agenda item ten, discuss take action, award of request for bids for stormwater renewal replacement, F. forty-nine, nineteen. Alan?
Feel like I'm at a news conference with all these microphones.
In videos.
Yeah, right? Good evening. Before you tonight is a request for approval and the award of bid to Joe Bear... Before you tonight is a request for approval and the award or bid to Joe Bear Construction for the first project that we selected from our updated stormwater master plan. Last year, the council voted to approve an increase in the stormwater utility, because we have so many needs in the city of deteriorating infrastructure or just inadequate pipe sizes. In this instance, we have an aluminum pipe that was used in certain areas of the southern part of the city that is deteriorating under sidewalks and driveways, and has become very dangerous, basically. So we need to replace it. So the, was put out the bid. Joe Bear Construction won the award with an alternate bid to complete a project we had here on time. We've had the material to do the project. We just haven't had time to do it, or we've lost some people, got new people, lost some expertise, so we added that to this project. And David King gave us the, he vetted all the bidders, and Joe Bear has done work for us in the past. They did all the paving work and curb work on the last big paving project we did on the south end of the city. They did a great job, worked with us well, and so I would recommend that as well, the, you know, authority.
Thank you. Questions from council?
Can you explain the bid alternate? That's adding a little extra work? Is that what you mean?
Yes, yes. On time, we, there was some issues with a pipe. I don't know if you remember, but when it gets heavy raining, time street floods. So we found that there were the, a lot of the pipes, 50-year-old pipes, full of roots and trash, getting caught up in the roots and different things, so we decided to replace large sections of that stormwater system. There was one remaining piece that needed to be done, and as I said, we lost some people who had some expertise that we needed, and that trying to find people is like, you know, is getting more and more difficult. People that have the expertise, that, you know, wanna come to work for the city, and just different factors. So we added that to the project, and get that completed.
And the one for Elm and Temple and DeSoto, that's the section?
Yes. From, actually, it's Temple from Elm to DeSoto, and then on Elm, it would be from Rosada to Temple, and then DeSoto would be from the backside, there's a structure on the backside of the house that is on Verbena, and that would go all the way to Rosada, under sidewalk and driveways. And if you look at that sidewalk closely, you can see where it's doing this, because it's an aluminum corrugated pipe that was put in probably 30, 40 years ago, and it's now deteriorating. There's no bottom to it. It's completely gone, basically.
So does it, like, dig up everything and close the street, kinda like what was happening on Cale? Will it be that-
Won't be that severe. We'll keep a lane open. We make sure that our contractors understand that folks have to get in and out of their houses, you know, and the streets have to be passable, so we'll do everything we can to make sure that we at least have some access, that folks have access to their homes.
Okay. Further? This time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 10.
Dale Abrams, Ocean Street, my favorite subject, stormwater. It's so sexy. Do we have access to any of the half-a-penny money? Access to the half-a-penny money, the SOIRL money, S-O-I-R-L, which you're on the committee? The Oversight Committee?
Yeah, we would if it was a water quality project, but this is simply maintenance of a pipe, so it wouldn't qualify for those funds.
Maintenance of pipe?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but you're saying-
Yeah, there's no treatment. There's no treatment opportunities here.
It's just for flood attenuation?
All right, well, because I'm reading, I see that Indian Harbor Beach is doing some things, and they're accessing some of this money.
Because they're doing water quality projects. The water quality project that we had with DeSoto was already too far planned and funded already, so we didn't need to do that.
We didn't, we weren't able to get any money from the half-a-penny for this DeSoto stormwater project.
We were too far along with that.
Okay. All right, so.
But all of our next water quality projects will be submitted, yeah?
Tell me, explain a water quality project again?
So there's the difference between flood attenuation, which is just moving the water to make sure it doesn't flood in the area, and that's where your pipes are. But you could do water quality if you did, for example, exfiltration and had BAM material in the pipe. If we were to do something of that nature, if the pipe was big enough, we could, it could be a water quality project. So if it reduced nutrient loading, like the DeSoto pond does, then that would, that's what we call treatment, and that would qualify for their SOIRL funds.
But you also just mentioned flooding.
Yeah, if it's a flood attenuation project only, and it's just maintenance, it wouldn't qualify.
Okay.
And this is simply maintenance project.
All right. Are you, do you know anything about the Big Muddy Canal?
I have no idea.
All right, well, you ought to look into it.
What is it?
What is it? Never heard anything called that. What did they talk about, the satellite ditch? Public comment is still open on Agenda Item 10. Here are no further public comment. Back to council. Do I have a motion?
I've never done this before. I make a motion to approve the stormwater renewal replacement fiscal year 19, bid award to Joe Bear Construction with a base bid amount of $681,221, and the alternate bid of $59,998, for a total of $741,219.
Thank you. I will second. I got a motion by Councilwoman Rosicky, seconded by Vice Mayor Breimer. Further discussion from council? Here are none. Quinn?
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosicky?
Yes.
Mayor Katina?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Alan, thank you. Next, moving on to Agenda Item 11, Discuss Take Action on Donation of Retired City Vehicles to Satellite High School.
Good evening. Before you this evening is a request to donate, the approval, for the approval to donate two of our retired city vehicles to Satellite High School, the auto mechanics program. We've done this in the past, and they're very appreciative. Randy Pitt up there is an instructor, award-winning instructor, actually, who helps these kids learn how to fix vehicles and do different things with cars, and we have two cars that we, and I included in there an estimate that one of our, well, the only person that actually offered to buy the vehicles for both, it was $375. And I think the educational benefit is much more, worth much more than $375. So I would like to be able to donate those to the school.
I agree. If you ever go up there and see what they do at that shop, it is amazing. It's incredibly programmed, so do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve donation of two retired city vehicles to Satellite High School Auto Mechanics Program for educational purposes.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Rosicky, seconded by Vice Mayor Breimer. At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 11. Here are none. Back to council. Any further?
Nope, I think that's awesome.
Quinn?
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosicky?
Yes.
And Mayor Katina?
Yes. Thank you, Alan. Appreciate your work there. Moving on to Agenda Item 12, Discuss Take Action on Proposal to Contribute and Create a Documentary on Recycling in Florida Through Balance for Earth.
Thank you, Mayor. As you recall, we had a visit to our recycling center a little while ago. I think it was Councilman Montanaro, myself, along with several other individuals from our sustainability board, and we got a tour of that, and we had a lot of video footage from that tour, and also just a good meeting with waste management about the issues associated with single-stream recycling, and how a lot of the recycling laws and statutes on, you know, weighing in and meeting all the requirements to be a recycler in Florida, occurred before single-stream recycling, and the fact that there's, they need glass to make those weight requirements, is affecting, because in single stream, it breaks, it gets attached to all the plastic, and contaminates the plastic and the cardboard, so it makes it hard for them to actually get a market for those materials if they're largely contaminated. And then also, the issues with plastic bags, you know, just the knowledge, if I, when I tell people about what, you know, actually gets recycled, and they immediately start thinking, okay, well, maybe I need to stop buying some of this other stuff that doesn't, I know doesn't make it into the recycling market. And so what we're hoping to do is create this documentary, along with, there's other commitments that we're getting in with Surf Rider and some of the other nonprofits, to hopefully, with, a lot of the waste companies have proposed legislation in the state level right now, and what we're hoping to do is not only educate the public about recycling and what actually gets recycled and things like that, what to recycle, what to avoid using because it doesn't get recycled, stuff like that, but also to educate our legislators on, you know, some of the archaic rules, and how that's affecting current recycling systems. So this would be funded out of the recycling fund, and, there's this wire down here, but we'll fix it. So we're hoping to get participation from other, you know, localities, and what we would do is require a minimum of, a level, letters of commitment prior to giving the entire amount to Balance for Earth to do the documentary. So we're hoping to get your approval on that, and then we'd move forward with it if you so choose.
And this comes from the city's recycling fund, anyway.
That's correct.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Any further comments from council? Any comments from council?
Is Balance for Earth the same gentleman group that did-
Who does all of our other videos?
Okay.
At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 12.
Just want to clear something up. Dan Welliman, Carriage Park, again. Is Balance for Earth, this is Dylan Hanson, he's the guy that was booed out of the Brockovich Town Hall for throwing shade, right?
I have no idea, sir. I mean, is that a statement you're making?
I'm asking. I believe it's the same individual. Is Balance for Earth run by Dylan Hanson?
I'm not sure about what you're saying.
That's a question. Is Balance for Earth run by Dylan Hanson?
Again, I don't know.
Okay.
If you say it, I wasn't at that meeting. Thank you. Public comment still open? Here are none. Bring it back to council. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept a proposal to create a documentary on recycling in Florida with Balance for Earth.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Rosicky, seconded by Vice Mayor Breimer. Any further? None? Quinn?
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosicky?
Yes.
Mayor Katina?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Agenda Item 13 is the proposed agenda for our next meeting. Although we state, if you have something else you'd like to put on, please see the city manager on it. And again, this is a proposed agenda. It can change.
It can change.
Moving on to Agenda Item 14, City Council Workshop.
I make a motion to adopt the March 6 regular meeting and March 6 workshop meeting as presented.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Breimer.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Rosicky. Any further discussion? Here are none. Quinn?
Councilwoman Rosicky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Katina?
Yes, motion passes. Is there any further business before council? Here are none. Meeting adjourned.
Oh, yeah?
Big time. Nobody's asleep.
I'm not eating? Yes.
Yeah.
I am gone.
I went there for a lagoon thing that they had there.
No, I said if I don't, I'm not eating.
Yeah, right.